Good evening. I'd like to call together this King George County Board of Supervisors CIP Budget Work Session. So, call that to order and I'd like to open up public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? The none. Mr. Dines, anyone online for public comment? Okay. Anybody have any written correspondence or anything? Nope. Okay. Moving right along, closing public comment. All right. Mr. Miller, CIP overview?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you have your FY 22, 23 to 20, 20, 26, 27 Capital Improvement Plan. And tonight, what you have in front of you is the various projects listed and also the Planning Commission's ranking. So, as you recall, the Planning Commission receives this first. Ms. Hall pulls it together in terms of the presentation and then the individual department heads make their presentation to the Planning Commission. We held that meeting on July 12th and then they rank the CIP projects as presented to the, as presented to the Planning Commission. And as you can see on the, there is a large legal document that's at your individual spots that has a, some numerals there in red and those are the priority ranking that the Planning Commission members gave to the projects as presented. Some of these projects obviously have been discussed in previous meetings, especially last year. I will just note that for FY 22, 23, which is the operative year that we are looking for funding for, you have approximately $41 million that are on the table. The, and this was what was presented to the Planning Commission. Keep in mind, two of those projects. One is a, the $25 million estimate that the preschool replacement. And you also then have an $11.8 million project for the countywide radio system, which Sheriff Giles will present here in a minute. And that has been presented last year, but obviously is being funded this year. So, overall, when you look at the five years, you have a lot of capital projects. You have 84.6 million and that can be a daunting number, obviously. But it's that 22, 23 fiscal year that is the most pertinent in the sense that we are funding that. The other projects are more for planning purposes, the other years, to show you what is out there, to get you to have it on your horizon. But you have tonight, a number of presentations that we will have the departments and the constitutional officers present. And, oh, I'm supposed to read this. Okay. Pursuant to Article 5, Section 15.2-2239 of the Virginia Code, you are to provide a capital improvement plan. It's a guide towards the provision of public facilities and equipment. Serves as a planning instrument to identify needed capital projects and coordinate the financing and timing of improvements. And it's reviewed and adjusted annually based on current circumstances and opportunities. I think the other thing that's important to remember is that you have this, you have about a certain amount of money for the capital and then on top of it, we are in our final year of the money from the ARPA money, which is a 2.6 million. You have obligated some of that money already, but that is also going to be available that we would be able to distribute throughout the capital improvement projects. We, this is the process that Ms. Hahn and the departments and myself go through. So, the departments receive submittal instructions. The submittals are reviewed by finance department and then and myself for completeness and they forward those to the Community Development Director. And that's the process of submitting it to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, as I said, it conducted their public hearing on the 12th of July. And then following the public hearing, the Planning Commission provides recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors, you all will review and discuss and adopt the five-year CIP and the capital budget and appropriate the funds for the current capital year, excuse me, the capital funds for the current year. So, our presentations, here's the listing. We figured since we're in the sheriff's home base, we might as well let him go forward. I don't know if he has somewhere else to be, but we appreciate the opportunity to be here and I'm going to turn it over to all the department heads.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Chair and Board Members, appreciate the opportunity to come before you again tonight for the proposal for the radio upgrade. Quite honestly, nothing has changed out of my initial request. So, to sit here and go over it again would kind of be a moot point. I can give you an update as far as Motorola does have a proposal on the table that would incorporate Phase 1 and 3, which is the public safety infrastructure in our radios and then also the school bus radios that would allow us to speak back and forth to the radio. So, that is on the table to cover the 11.8 million for both of those phases. The, it does end in the end of September. That proposal, that was the cutoff date for it. So, I really sit here before you tonight to kind of ask you to really move forward with that project tonight and get it on the, on the agenda so we can get that project rolling to get it done because the radio system is failing bits and pieces here and there. We're band-aiding it together to keep it running. But we are at end of life and it's going to cost us more money in the long run to keep it fixed and keep it running on what we can. So, I am here to answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir. I was just-
Mr. Chairman, what is the total amount of money available this year with ARPA?
It was $2,600 over two years, each year for two years. So, you received 2.6. You've already obligated 150 in the, in the current year because of the broadband grant. We also asked you at your last meeting, was it, how much was that? Was it three?
So, it's two, it's, you know, a total of 2.6 million. We obligated 150,000 for the broadband and at tomorrow night's meeting, I'm going to ask you, it was approved during the operating budget, the $400,000 for the sheriff's vehicles. So, that leaves approximately, and then the HVAC system, and I forget what that was. So, that's like close to another 400,000. I think it was three something, 300,000 on that. So, that's also been, so you're a little under 2 million left. About 1.8, 1.7, 1.8 left.
What were the terms of this contract?
I believe it's, it's a proposal off of the VIDA contract, which is the Virginia Information Technologies Agency. And he said that the proposal had a end date of, I believe it's September 28th on that. And this is something that we also included in our operating budget to secure funding for the project. So, we set aside money to pay a loan. Mr. Miller and I are actually meeting with Davenport, Kyle Wachs from Davenport, on tomorrow afternoon to discuss going out for funding and what we need to do, whether we go private or public. If we go private sale, we can do a really quick turnaround time on financing. Public takes a little bit longer, but we could be ready to close in 30 to 45 days on a private financing.
So, Mr. Collins, there's funding available based on what Ms. Hahn indicated for this project. This project was never, you know, you don't have the funding to do this project through the regular capital process. So, it was always identified that there would be some kind of a long-term financing that you would do and that's what we put in the operating budget.
Mr. Chairman, one more question. So, that's what, that was my, that was my ask. What was the encumbrance amount that we would be, have per year on this particular financing agreement?
We don't know the terms yet of that. I'm certain that we could provide you before, before you approve the CIP projects with what kind of Kyle with Davenport would identify as kind of a rough estimate of what terms you would get right now. But I mean, until you do an actual bid or whatever you want to call it, a financing offer, then you're not going to get the terms yet.
So, would that be the same on the preschool? Would you have to do the same process?
So, my understanding is the $25 million in the preschool and Dr. Boyd can certainly talk about this because he did present this to the, to the Planning Commission and it was pretty much agreed that we would only ask for about 250 or maybe a little bit more to do a study of the preschool. That until you knew, you know, had an engineer or had an architect come up with an actual plan, you wouldn't know that, I mean, it wouldn't be the 25 million. And so, that was a number that I believe Dr. Benson had put in as a placeholder and he obviously identified that, you know, it may be highly inflated because of the current market conditions. And, you know, certainly when Mr., when Dr. Boyd is up here, he can talk about it. But it, the high priority for the schools was to get the funding for a study first and then go to the next step. I would think that the Board of Supervisors in a future year or two will obviously have to confront that issue of how you're going to finance that. It's certainly something that will be on your plate in the future years.
It should be on our plate sooner than future years. It should be, start to be on our plate right now. So, the 250,000, sorry Sheriff, the 200, I'm trying to get everybody's money. I just want to see how we can do it. The 250,000 is to tell us that it needs to be torn down and something else built? Or is it to actually draw a plan for a new building?
So, currently there is a study underway on the old middle school along with the new, or excuse me, with the old courthouse. What are you going to do with those two facilities? Mr. Cusenberry and I met today and he indicated that you're looking at probably a three to four month period before you'll know the results of that study. The, the idea of a middle school, excuse me, a new preschool, I think is a different animal. It's, it's not necessarily you're going to use that facility at the old middle school. That could be another use. It is certainly possible that you could use it for the preschool. But the preschool decision is going to drive itself and, and, you know, you may not, you just may want to use the space of the old middle school. So, I think that you do need to probably see that study. But then what, how big is the new preschool? That's a decision that's maybe another study, I would think. That's not something that's going to be done in this study because that was never the purpose of this current review that, that is going through. It's more of what can you do with the building? Can you do anything or does it need to be tear, torn down and then you just use the space? So, I think that my understanding, and I'll reserve this for Dr. Boyd. It is when we get to that point of, let's focus on the new preschool, that's going to be the only focus on that study is to what it's, what it's going to be. It's not about, could you use this old middle school for other purposes or, you know, so. You kind of got two, you got two studies that are going to have to happen.
So, I hear you. But, so we're, the capital improvement program goes out to 2027. So, I would think that we'd have some of them studies or some before we start spending money on things that might not be there.
So, I heard Mr. Collins' question and I'll be honest, I was a little confused by your answer.
Yeah, I can understand.
So, I wasn't sure why the, the middle school was brought up. I'm not sure if Mr. Collins was asking him. Were you asking about the middle school?
I didn't, but I was, you know, that's part of a discussion, I would hope, this evening about our-
That's fine. I just-
Empty buildings.
I didn't know if I missed something. So, anyways, based on the note from Mr. Parker, the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I see here the note that says, "Planning Commission would only be amenable to $25,000 study this year for the preschool." What I heard Mr. Collins ask was, that $25,000 study, what would that be for? To figure out what to do, like whether we should even get a new middle, preschool, preschool, not middle school, preschool? And, and so I know there's a study and we funded CIP for a study of the current courthouse, which will be the old courthouse here shortly, and the middle school in order to see what to do with those buildings. But that's already been funded and I know that activity's going on. But this 25,000, what would it be for?
Quite frankly, I don't know what it's for because we had projected or we had presented the, so what was presented was the 25 million.
Yes.
And then in the discussions at the public hearing, the Planning Commission felt that, and I think Dr. Boyd agreed, that we would have a study first and that the 25 would not be something that you had to worry about at this point.
Okay.
So, we kind of thought you're looking at a study of about 25, or excuse me, 250, maybe 300,000 just to, you know, based on information that what we thought. The 25,000, I think, is what they recommended.
Okay. We can shortcut this then. Dr. Boyd will be up here. We don't really answer that. It's fine. I know Sheriff's up here. I apologize because I helped to make us dilate on that conversation. I apologize for getting off base.
But going back to-
How much it costs encumber a year so we can include a lot of these projects? That's unfortunately his and his are the most expensive. So, you know, we want to make these things happen where we need to.
But, but going back to last year, the Board wanted to have the study of the old middle school and the old courthouse. And so, we had explained that at the Planning Commission level, that there was going to be a study that was done. Now, it is not going to be specific to the preschool. It will be specific to what your opportunities for usage are. It could be a preschool, it could be a rec center, it could be a new, a site for a fourth elementary. So, I think that's where that study's more generic in focus. And then that's where we are saying, if you were going to do another study for the preschool, that would be the money that you would identify. And I think that's where Mr. Parker had said 25,000. And I don't know what, I don't know that you can get 25,000. I don't know what you can get for 25,000 with a study.
Tracking. I think we should table this until we have the school come up to discuss. I apologize. And like I said, I apologize for getting us off track as well, but-
Yeah, I'd like to kind of get back onto that. Sheriff Giles, anybody else have any questions for Sheriff Giles? I know it kind of got sidetracked with your, your question, but thank you, sir.
But I will tell you, in going back to the sheriffs and the public radio system, you have the, the funds in there, in your operating budget to cover a long-term debt along with the firehouse in Dahlgren and along with the gap funding for the courthouse. What we are probably going to come back to you with soon will be a package that will include the funding for the public radio system or the police radio system and the courthouse funding that needs to get done. So, what you want to do with the, what you want to do with the schools is going to, is really something that you, the numbers were not realistic enough to drive this forward at this, at this time. I agree with you that this is going to be an issue, but it may be it's an issue for next year's capital, but it's not something that these numbers are not realistic and I think they would agree with you on that.
Mr. Chairman, so, yeah, I agree the number's not realistic. And if you look at the, the, where it puts the 25 million, it's all the way over 2027. And the Planning Commission, the staff priority was urgent, that means now. The Planning Commission was for, but I, I, I think that it needs to be truly urgent. That it needs to be, if you're going to do the $25,000, I can do it for 100 bucks, tear it down. You know, it's, it's, it's a fact. Anybody that's seen that building knows you're going to pay $25,000 to tell you something you already know. But if, that you're going to do that for this year, but then that needs to be in the next year, not all the way out to the 27. I don't know what the rest of the members of the Board feel about that, but I think that that needs to be, you know, a lot sooner.
It's currently under 2022, 2023, the, all the way up to the right is the totals. I'm con-
But it not really, doesn't really show the funding.
It shows the funding for actually this capital improvement plan here.
Right, but, but that's not true.
Agreed. Like with the courthouse, there was time because you had to put plans together and it's not like you just say, hey, let's break ground and start building a courthouse. Same thing with preschool.
Right, so it should be, it doesn't take, it takes about a year to do that. So, that's why I'm saying you move that money to the next year.
When Dr. Benson prepared the CIP request, that, the column that's in 2022, 2023, it's just the request by the department head or the school superintendent. So, at that time, he went ahead with that request and just put a placeholder number in it. And then, so Dr. Boyd will speak more about that now if we can give him that opportunity. Then, you know, but that's just where that, the number comes from in that column. That doesn't mean that we have to approve it this year and then it gets slid back like the sheriff's, the public safety radio system that was in for this year and last year. So, it can move forward this year. And that's how we-
Just one more comment before Dr. Boyd starts is that, so like the, the middle school was in the same type of deal where you had the placeholder in the year and then it, they put it out, you know, five, it took 10 years to do it. So, what I'm saying is we, I think several of us agree. I don't know how many, but it needs to be moved way forward. Needs to start something other than $25,000 study. So, thank you, for Dr. Boyd now. Thank you.
Yes, all right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I appreciate this opportunity. As, as you guys have already mentioned, I'm picking this up and running with it from Dr. Benson's previous approach. As we all know now, this 25 million was a placeholder on the front end. I don't know that there's been a whole lot of qualitative development with that estimate and many things have changed since I think he originally placed it on there. I'm totally with everybody that has the sense of urgency on getting this done. I think that I, I'm just diving into this process and appreciating it and understanding how it works and I appreciate Chris's help and Donna's help as far as what those next steps are and how we get things moving. I can tell you that in this new role for, for about two months now, I think what's going to drive it more than anything is our, is our school population. And, and we're really seeing that kind of grow across the school division. And I'm hoping that as we move forward and I have this full process, you know, whatever my capacity is in the future, I can, I can certainly deliver a more quantitative argument as far as needs and number of students we have in the school division. But nevertheless, qualitatively, the, the presentation I gave to the Planning Commission was, was one very much of quality. And as it's already been mentioned, I can walk you guys quickly through the quality of that building. So, I won't take long to show you guys this because I know you've seen many of it. Quick history lesson up on the left-hand side. Anybody know who the president was when that building was built? Franklin D. Roosevelt. All right. Long, 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 long time ago. And then you'll just see some of the, the exterior of the building down in the lower right-hand side. Next slide, please, Chris. On the capital improvement plan, there has been a recommendation depending on what we do with this building. In the short term, there's already some really soft and squishy spots on the roof that have been taken pictures of by Gary Cliff. So, I added those. You can see those sections there. Next slide. The stucco around the windows, which is, was a Band-Aid at one time, is deteriorating and the window AC units now do provide climate control in that building, but that's also been a Band-Aid of sorts. All right, this, the interior walls, which I learned a little bit, they're, the original walls were lath and plaster walls and no matter what you do to them, they will just continue to fall off. They just completely deteriorate. And that's what some of that, portion of that building looks like right now. Next slide. There's electric, all of these things over the years have been Band-Aids in that building. There's electric ceiling-mounted heaters in the bathroom so the pipes don't freeze, no air conditioning in the bathroom. And what I think is really interesting to look at, you feel like you're back in a museum. You see your fire alarm on the right-hand side with those large huge fuses, which are very difficult to come by now. It does have an auditory alarm, but currently does not have a dialer that dials out to the fire department. Only horns and strobes. So, next, next slide. And then this serves our preschool kids right here and, you know, certainly want to do best by them. So, I'll stop there. I know you guys know more about that building than I probably do. But like I said, the argument when I received it is one of quality and I think, I think you can certainly tell that, as Mr. Collins has said, it's, it's a building that's past its prime. So, I can, I can certainly pause there for any questions about the preschool. My understanding is that the next step is, is the, the study. And, and I'm certainly happy with understanding that process and moving forward as quickly as we possibly can because I do think, you know, given the condition of that building, we don't have much time to spare.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask, well, would you look for a study like the one that was done for the courthouse where it was a needs analysis so that we were prepared to exactly what we need? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, one that's going to provide some qualitative figures, some quantitative figures as far as what we could, what we need.
That makes sense to me. And then just a little historical fact where you said the B Wing was, that was the original high school, first high school, so.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Thank you. Ms. Hahn, can you refresh my memory? Did we not use ARPA funding to pay for the studies, the Ralph Bunch study and the courthouse study? So, might there be an opportunity to use ARPA funds to fund that, this study or needs analysis of the current preschool then?
Yes and yes. I think after tonight, like what we did last year, Mr. Miller and I went back and looked at the different items that were being requested and came back to you all with recommendations. So, we can certainly add that to our list when we go over the different projects.
Thank you. And then has the county engineer been consulted with regard to the estimated cost of this study? Because that seems awfully low to me. Is that a number that the Planning Commission just-
That's correct.
-threw against the wall and said, hey, this will stick?
The engineer was not present at that meeting when they came up with that amount.
Yeah, that seems-
That, that's what the-
Yeah, that does not seem realistic to me, quite frankly. So, would there be consensus from the Board to direct staff to get with the county engineer to come up with a better number for that study?
So, before you draw consensus-
Well, I just did, Mr. Collins.
Okay, what consensus for me? I thought a consensus was all agree, not a vote, but a consensus. Aren't they different?
Do you have something to add to it or you have something for discussion?
So, Dr. Boyd showed the best part of the school. So Dr. Boyd showed the best part of the school. That school, no matter how you look at it, doesn't need to be there. I don't know why we would spend $25,000 for something. We, there's not going to be another use. That, that, the children shouldn't even be in there now, much less having Parks and Rec kids in there. That's, I, I thought that's what we were, we were working on in the old middle school where they'd have another gymnasium down there. I, I didn't, I thought that, I thought it was agreed that that building needs to go.
I think the needs, the, the study is going to be just basically what the school needs not to fix that building?
That's what I would hope for is, is maybe not one that looks at the condition of that current building and what to do with it, but one that looks at the feasibility or, or what the need of the preschool, school population, location, things of that nature that would come out of-
I think it's more of a wish list, what the school is looking for and needing to. I don't think anybody here in this room would say, yeah, let's even do a study to replace a brick over there. Yes, that whole place needs to go away.
Mr. Chair, um, back in 2019, when I did the infrastructure study, I talked to Dr. Benson about preschool needs and he gave me some figures. So, I mean, it makes sense to have someone who's more versed in how to build the school and how to put together like we did for the courthouse. So they get it down to the fine, so we know how much money we need for a new building and what kind of facility, the footprint, all that, before we run out and do anything else.
Mr. Chair?
So I agree with Mr. Collins' point that this is urgent. I think this, and so not wanting to continue to have year over year where you're just planning, uh, I think it's maybe where kind of Mr. Collins is coming from, and I, I think that's a fair point. And so I guess my question maybe be out of the study hearing that, understanding the needs of the school population, definitely very important, and I, I agree with that. But with like the courthouse and the, and the middle school expansion, we knew where it was going. And we knew that going in. I don't think we know where the preschool's going. Would we, I would really like coming out of this year, us to know, hey, we have a plan, we know what the needs are, we know where it's going to go. And so then we could do the next step of actually, you know, maybe doing engineering diagrams next year. Because I know it, it takes time. These, these buildings don't just go up overnight. But, but next year it needs to be ready to move and say, hey, where is it going to be built? And now let's get, you know, some, some diagrams built or drawn up for us so we can move the next year to actually fund the, at start of the construction.
I, I, I would agree if you spent the $25,000 to get it into the next year with the totality of the plan. That was, that's what I was trying to say, Mr. Grager. Thank you for reading my mind and spitting that back out for me.
If I could ask a question, I, I think that what I heard was you, the $25,000 is not something that you're going to agree to tonight. You want us to come back with some information about what a, what a real study would, would cost. Is that correct?
May I, Mr. Chair? Yes, that's correct. What I was seeking consensus for was to direct staff to consult with the county engineer to determine a real dollar amount for this needs analysis that the schools are requesting. Thank you.
The other thing, if I may ask, Dr. Boyd, and I think we've talked about it, what, what is your, what is the school's kind of planning horizon for the, for the possible fourth elementary school?
So I, I'm digging into that too. I, I took a look at, um, you know, our copper, our 2019 comprehensive plan, and I'm working with Mr. Cliff right now, he should have the figures for me very soon. But in that comprehensive plan, our, our elementary schools are listed at, uh, 900 for enrollment. Um, and so I, I kind of find that hard to believe, honestly. I, I think, uh, King George Elementary, Potomac and Sealston are all different, very different schools. Uh, right now, those are listed at 900. So current populations are, uh, enrollments are 622 at King George Elementary, which if you take that 900 number, you've got about 200, 273 spots left. Your Potomac Elementary School is, is 538. There's no way that that's going to fit 900 students. Um, in, in fact, if you talk to most folks on, at Potomac Elementary School, they're telling you they're busting at the seams now. Uh, and then Sealston is also very high in enrollment right now. That's 785 and continues to grow. Uh, the kindergarten class and, and fifth grade class at, at that, uh, school right now is 25 students per grade level. So we're working on that internally on trying to address that. Uh, but as you can see, very quickly, we're growing at a pretty rapid rate. That's just the elementary level.
And, and I said that just, I wanted to just reference that so that you kind of put in your future horizon that, you know, clearly the preschool's the priority. But right off behind it is going to be the possibility of a fourth middle school. And so that opens up-
Elementary school.
Excuse me, fourth elementary school. That then opens up that idea that if you, you, how important that old middle school site could be because it may have the potential to fit multi, um, you know, buildings, multi-facilities, um, where you could have like a campus of the preschool and then, and then a new elementary or whatever. So I think those are the things that the school board and you all as board supervisors are going to have to continue to keep in front of you and, and not get it out there far away, so.
Mr. Chairman, so when the middle, old middle school was abandoned, they did a study to determine if it could be, um, another middle school. They wanted to have two middle schools at one point. And the study was that it doesn't meet the requirements for the room sizes and so forth. So, um, in the state, there are certain sizes for rooms for each grade level and so many bathrooms and all that other stuff. And so the amount of money it would cost to, to make that school into a middle school was astronomical because they had to put up beams and stuff, tear down walls. They couldn't just put it in the same blueprint. But it was my understanding they could make that a, um, preschool, that it would fit into that, uh, legal, fit in the preschool. So you couldn't, you can't put an elementary school. The only thing you could, if you did school in the current footprint is the preschool, not an elementary. Wouldn't fit into that category either. Because they did look into that. There was like 45 acres with that parcel. So whatever the plan is, or that parcel for the, the county now owns that before the schools owned that. So you can look at it in a bigger picture, what you can do with the rest of it. But you, in the, in the preschool, we'd have to, if you wanted to put other resources over there, we would have to make sure that, that we could make the preschool accessible only to that use. The rest of it would have to have some type of other entrance where it would be cut off. Not saying it can't be done, but, um, it's something to consider when you're thinking about the big plan. So we know it can't be an elementary school there, maybe in the 45 acres, but they say that there's some of that, the topography is not so good for that, that space. But there's still a lot of usable acres there. So you could have a, a elementary campus there also, you know, in the back. But it had to be separate, let's say the county Parks and Rec had, um, some stuff there. It had to be separate, completely separate, where they couldn't get over from one to the other. Of course, the old middle school, I know we're talking, we're going a little, I'm going way out beyond the bounds, but, uh, Mr. Muncie, I mean, they could fit the, um, public utilities in that back section with very little amount of money to, um, make that back section with the garage doors to be usable. So I just, um, and I'll stop in just a second. I'm going to say it one more time. I asked this board to bring this, um, this preschool replacement forward in the planning, in the, in, in the paperwork.
I just want to put it, you know, if I had my dream, I'd knock that building down right now and site an elementary school and preschool and head start and school board office, all in that one. It can be done, but we have to plan it out and do it the right way. And, you know, there are some that would like to keep that old building, but I think we should just get rid of now. So if wishes were fishes, just putting in the comment there.
I wouldn't send my kid there as it is now. I mean, I've been through that whole building. It's, it's disgusting, it's, you know, I don't even know if it's safe. I don't know if you've ever been in there, look at it, see if it, you know, meets structural safiness, this hall. But some of the things I've seen in there are, you ever, I've been to the bowels of that building? There's got to be somebody dead back there.
Okay. Sure, I, so, so real quickly, um, these certain, these other ones are certainly not as big as the preschool replacement project. Uh, Potomac Elementary School is the only, uh, elementary school left, uh, in the county that does not have an, uh, playground that's accessible to our handicap students, an ADA playground. Uh, Sealston and, uh, King George L. have that, uh, facility now. School bu, school bus replacement, as I understand it, is, uh, an item that we have on, uh, the capital improvement plan annually. We purchased five school buses last year. We just received, uh, three, I believe, and we're waiting for another two. Uh, access control system at Potomac Elementary School needs some upgrades. As you guys know, it was, it was a season or a summer and really a continuation of, of, of school safety and security on, on everybody's mind. Uh, so, so having that access system at Potomac Elementary School up and operational and, and fully functional so that, um, uh, it works as, as it's supposed to is certainly an urgent matter as it's listed. And then again, the, uh, parking lots and driveways at some of our school facilities right now, Potomac in specifically, uh, it's got some, some, uh, pavement issues that need to be addressed. Uh, and then finally, as I already mentioned, the preschool roofing, as I showed in the pictures there, depending on what direction we decide to go in with the, with the preschool, uh, there's a, there's almost an immediate need for, uh, or a necessary need for roofing to be, uh, prepared at the existing preschool. I'll stop there for any questions if you have them.
And then, Mr. Chair, I, I know this is not on here, but it, it's a concern I have, especially at King George Middle School. The AC units, I know at Potomac and King George Middle School, you've had some issues in, over the summer with the AC units. Are they, or how old are they? Should they be on here of a replacement? Because I'm going back to what I've been harping on for the last seven years, a replacement and maintenance plan.
I think we, we, we work with Honeywell on that. Uh, actually, one of those units at the middle school was a newer unit and, uh, it's been fixed and repaired now. So I, I'm not too concerned about that. Uh, that, that was a perfect storm that evening for the open house. Uh, two units went down. Everyone was really, uh, great as far as managing it, but, um, it did happen at the perfectly wrong time. Those two units, uh, were being worked on that evening and were up the very next morning. Uh, Potomac has a slightly different type of system, as I understand it right now. Um, but as far as I know, that's operational as well.
Alright, and then going back again, especially at Potomac, the trailers that are there, I've walked through them. They're pretty bad. What, what is, what is the plan? Like, do you have a plan of, you know, that would need an addition onto Potomac? What about those trailers or a new trailer contract? Because they're pretty, no, 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 I'm talking about the other trailers on the other side of the building. I know, I know the ones are gone. I'm talking the other ones, I've been through them, they're pretty bad.
So there's two sets, right? There's the modular units which are gone now. Uh, and then we also have the other two units there that, uh, we currently rent. Uh, they've been out and making repairs on them. I continue to press Mr. Cliff on, uh, what our arrangement is as far as, uh, the rental of those units. Uh, they are being repaired. I'll continue to press on them as far as seeing what we can do to improve that relationship with the rental company. Uh, there's a lot of conversation about what we're doing with Potomac, you know, as it is. Uh, as I saw a lot of nods in the room, that the population of, of that area is already growing well past, uh, the capacity of Potomac. So that's certainly a conversation that, uh, is probably going to be a future one as well. And do we want to continue to put modular units and things of that nature out at that school? Or would we like to look at some other plan that considers the growth in that community?
And then going back to King George Middle School, there are certain, you know, with your safety plan, there's certain areas that probably need to be addressed also at the middle school that were not part of the original renovation. And I bring it back, in the future, I really would like to see, and this is for all counties, you know, departments, a maintenance and replacement plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Boyd, uh, so when I heard you speak to the preschool roofing, you said depending on the plan for the preschool, so what's the difference of, hey, the board is all in, and I'm not saying the board's all in, but is all in and wants to move forward versus no, let's, let's push it off? Uh, what would be the difference in the plan for the roofing in, in those two situations?
So when you say all in, you mean all in on building this new preschool?
Yeah, like, yeah, like, hey, uh, like I said, I'm not speaking for my colleagues. I'm not telling them that's what we're doing. I just want to understand what would be your recommended preschool roofing solution? If it was, yes, the board is really interested in making that happen versus no, the board is looking to push that off for some number of years?
Sure, I, I think, uh, it's tough to tell the future, but in talking to Mr. Cliff, he, he has recommended that, that the preschool roofing plan is, is necessary at this point. I think you can get a few years out of it if you had to. The way I understand it right now, it's not marked as urgent. Uh, but if, if the ultimate goal is to possibly level that building, then you certainly wouldn't want to throw good money after bad.
That's what I was trying to understand, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so, um, Potomac was just paved a couple of years back. So is that the, the pavement that's problematic?
From what I understand, it is the, uh, main entrance parking lot area. As soon as you come into the, uh, parking lot, there's a big pothole there on the right-hand side. The school board office in, in the preschool there was also, uh, in consideration. And there's some other areas, the high school parking lot too, has some, some, uh, nice fractures all the way through that area as well.
The, um, Potomac, that pothole you speak of has been problematic and, um, the board supervisors gave the school board a lot of money to fix that, and they did, and now it's back. So I, I would think about revisiting who fixed it because it was supposed to be, um, taken care of. I don't know how long the warranty on it. When they-
Yes, sir.
-paving the, um, preschool or school board, don't waste your energy.
Sure.
The access now, Potomac, did, were you successful this year in getting the grants? Because that's how they gotten the-
I think Hillary's working on that. Uh, I think she's got some plans in mind on what she can do to make sure that system's up to speed. It, it again is the, it's, it's making sure that there's accessibility in and out of the building for certain folks with key cards and things of that nature. So it's, it's quite a large project. I think she's working on pieces of it and making sure she can get it up to speed, but it's not, it's not the, the project in its entirety.
Yeah, that's how the, the rest of them were paid for though, through these state grants for the safety and security.
Okay.
I'll take a look at that for sure.
Um, Ms. Bender's replacement maintenance plan, um, when I was on the school board, we started it and then there was a change of, um, um, someone doing that job. So they actually had a, they were working on a, so there wouldn't be no surprises. Ms. Bender's absolutely correct that these things, so they can be planned, so it's easy to go through. We already know that we need, this one's air conditioner is 10 years and this pavement is five years or whatever it is. To have a complete, really complete, um, replacement maintenance plan. And that, that goes along also with the county too, with the vehicles and all the other equipment. There needs to be a, um, I, I highly endorse that. I hope we can get there somewhere someday. So it does make it easier to spend money when you already know it's coming and you can plan for it. Um, it's harder to spend money when it's surprise. And seems like King George gets a lot of surprises. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, so, refresh my memory again, Ms. Hahn. The ADA compliant playground at King George Elementary we did last year, that was also out of ARPA money, correct? I think so.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then my other question is, um, just blanked on it, playground, school bus replacement. Uh, well, I have a suggestion in the meantime. Could we perhaps put on the board to-do list? The board to-do list? A task for a maintenance plan for facilities and vehicles and so forth? And that way we get it on the board to-do list and we start tracking it? Is that okay with the board?
I would consensus that.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. And then, um, that was my other question for Ms. Hahn, just got it back. When I saw preschool roofing- So I note in the last meeting, and then again in tomorrow's packet, there were some funds remaining in the King George Elementary School roof replacement project that were not expended, and I know we did a good chunk in the last meeting for the tennis courts, a little bit more tomorrow for another project, but can you tell me, and if you can't tell me right now, could you email to the board in the future, what, after we do tomorrow's action, assuming we do tomorrow's action, what the remaining balance is in that project line item, please? Because that project is complete, correct?
That's correct, and right now, after that is all done, we have roughly two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars left.
Thank you very much.
If I could ask Ms. Cupka or Mr. Chair, is that, are we gonna do just a facilities maintenance plan? Or do you want me to also have a vehicle maintenance plan, because that is a, that is two different type of plans?
Both.
I agree, I don't see why we wouldn't do both.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
So, Dr. Boyd, um, Mr. Chair. What is the enrollment this year, so far in the first two weeks?
So right now, as of today, we are at forty-three oh nine, we were at uh, like forty-five hundred, um, but we did have two hundred no-shows currently, so right now we're at forty-three oh nine, specifically that breaks down to one thousand five hundred and forty-five at the high school, which is the highest number that I've known ever, that school is listed for seventeen hundred. Uh, one thousand nineteen at the middle school currently, and that school in the C I, in the um, uh, in the plan I mentioned, is nine hundred, and then I, I went over the, the elementary again, but that's six hundred and twenty-two at King George Elementary, five hundred and thirty-eight at Potomac, and seven hundred and eighty-five at Sealston, for a total of four thousand three hundred and nine.
What was the enrollment the first two weeks of last year, do you know? Not the A D M, the enrollment.
I know that our growth rate uh, from last year is about one point nine percent, so we've picked up somewhere in the ballpark of about a hundred students. And I think that's our average growth, from what I've been able to tell over the last decade or so.
And so what's the A D M that you're working off of right now?
Forty-three oh nine.
You're working off the forty-three oh nine?
Dr. Boyd, what was the high school's total again?
The high school's uh, enrollment right now is one thousand five hundred and forty-five, one thousand five hundred and forty-five.
Thank you.
And so some of these classes, like the fifth grade class at one point, they were so large that when they came through to the middle school, the middle school wasn't gonna be big enough to hold them, and then the middle school now will, so that, so is there a class at this time that's gonna meet those criteria? Or is the high school in that particular situation now that will, um, the class sizes, not the class sizes, the the class year will wait off, so the seniors are so many this year, and the juniors are so many. Well, that's, is that one of the problems there?
So it's, it's always, for, for all of my time at the high school, it's always been the freshman class is typically the largest, and you work up to the senior class. However, the, the class sizes right now, for example, the freshman class this year, right now, is four hundred and fifty-five students. That's, that's extremely large for, for all of the years I've been here, and I know in talking to other folks, probably the largest of, of all time. Uh, four hundred and fifty-five students is large, the, the ninth is three hundred and ninety, or the tenth, excuse me, tenth grade is three ninety-one, eleventh is three, three, three hundred and thirty-two, and our senior class is three hundred and fifty-seven.
How about the sixth grade, you know about the sixth grade?
Six is three hundred and sixty-eight right now. And all of them, uh, outside of, all of the middle school classes are over three hundred. I know when I started here seven years ago, we were in the twos in, in many classes, um, the high twos, low threes, depending on what class it was. Uh, right now, uh, we're all up in the, the higher threes, lower threes for some, so sixth grade's three sixty-eight, seventh grade's three eleven, eighth grade's three forty, um, and then our, our elementary schools break down by, by school, but they're all well over three hundred as well.
So what's, Mr. Miller, what is the, the number of approved housing on the, on now that haven't been built yet? Do you have an idea, or do?
I would ask Ms. Hall that, she probably can give that information like verbatim.
Since you didn't know.
We can get that.
So, you know, in planning-
I believe it'll be in her report tomorrow, is that correct?
It won't?
In planning the school's future, you know, the development that's, that's on tap, does have a big um, impact on what the planning is. So that would be a good number, cause they generally, it's generally say two point five kids per house, per home.
And we do work with um, Dr. Boyd on our development committee, he's a part of that with uh, with Ms. Hall's development committee when they have a subdivision or they have a particular um, uh, addition or whatever added to a-